Okay, I'm going to call the new order for a revolting council meeting. We just returned to closed session. Mr. Rudolph, can you report back for us?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Council's in closed session this evening on public employment. Assistant Government Code Section 54957 Title City Manager. There's no action to report.
Thank you. Next, they're giving the microphone to me. With that, the closed session will be terminated and we will begin the open session. Roll call, please.
Hi, it's Mayor Payne. Present. Councilmember Hewer.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Power.
Mayor. Mayor Cruz.
Present. Public comment. Can you read it, please?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, Members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the clerk.
And I do apologize, I got ahead of myself. Could you please rise for a silent prayer?
I point your attention to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is. Could you read the video stick?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse. The meeting is also webcast at www.satsmetrocable.tv. Tonight's meeting will air this Friday and Saturday at 9:00 a.m. This meeting is also closed captions. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. With council's permission, on the agenda approvals, additions and/or deletions, I'd like to move M1 forward to after the Sacramento Environmental Commission report to council. Okay? So we will be moving M1 forward. Presentations. Public Works, you have an employee to introduce. You have a stunned look on your face.
Oh. I do. I'm usually kind of a deer in the headlights. Tonight, we do have two new employee introductions and I believe they're both here in the audience. If I could, while I'm giving a quick brief bio, if I could have Anya Clarkson and Elvira Reyes come up. There are two new us. They're actually temporary employees that are sort of water conservation officers and if they can just join me here at the podium, I'll just give a real quick bio. They're temporary employees currently working four days, four hours a day, five days a week and on occasion that may go into weekends as they do our sort of water conservation, education, outreach and patrols. And Anya, on the right here, has a bachelor's degree in political science from the University of Civic of Tigers and with a minor in international studies. She actually has been adjunct professor, teaching some classes including self-defense and martial arts and stamina training among a few others. And she's not totally new to us in that she has been a city intern in two other departments prior to coming to Public Works over the last couple of years. So we're pleased to have Anya join our ranks. And her left is Elvira Reyes and she has a bachelor's degree in environmental engineering from UC Riverside and I don't know their mascot. She has worked with some ranching product handling groups and was a, also comes to us with some database and research background and worked a little bit for the Coia Delta Water Conservation District. Is that right? And I think that's down in Kern County area.
Hillary.
Hillary County. Okay, I've been to the Coia Delta on the Kern River, I believe it is. So she actually brings some experience collecting purpose and groundwater samples for water quality data. We'd like to welcome them both aboard. Currently, it's temporary position. Depending on where the drought goes, we may be bringing back future recommendations on when the program goes in the future. So welcome aboard and if anybody wants to hit their picture. Probably wants me to join you at some point here. And then if you have anything to say, certainly you can. I'm going to be clear for the. You've done some right thing. If you'd like to take it or just welcome aboard and they're out there working for you and have made several hundred contacts and door hanging and education on you over the last few weeks already.
Awesome. Welcome.
My dad, we wouldn't normally necessarily take the formal exercise to introduce temporary employees, but because they're out and are so visible in the public, I thought you ought to see their faces tonight and see who's out there working.
Thank you.
Awesome. All right, moving on to the Galt Youth Commission. Annual report to council.
My name is Jessica Parajas and this is Hannah Happing. We're here tonight to present to you the Galt Youth Commission Annual Report. This past year brought seven new commissioners to the Galt Youth Committee. Harry and the two others have been the only returning members.
As you may know, our purpose is outlined in the ordinance. However, in order to fulfill this purpose, we really needed to develop leadership foundational skills. How can we collaborate with the cities, businesses and nonprofits if we first don't build relationships? How can we encourage youth to get involved in activities that build better citizens if we don't first model what that looks like? How can we serve as a resource and advocate to city council if we haven't developed public speaking skills? Much of this past year was spent looking at ways to improve our process so we can serve more effectively. This year was definitely a year to care.
One of the first adjustments the commission made was ramping the agenda for monthly meetings. In order to truly serve our community, we needed to know what was going on. So one of the first adjustments we made was adding a standard agenda item on city council. Every month, council member Barbara Payne would inform the youth on any issues the city of Galt was dealing with that could affect the youth. Through the generosity of the Galt Herald, we received free subscriptions and were required to read the newspaper before our monthly meetings. A youth commissioner reports out at every meeting an article that could potentially be affecting the youth. Greater attention was given to how Hannah and I constructed the agenda. With the help of adult mentors, we learned how to draft the agenda and discuss how to better facilitate our meetings. For instance, incorporated icebreakers to a meeting to help everyone be more engaged. To value having full ownership of what our meetings look like.
Another significant change this year was when we revised the ordinance and bylaws. With your approval, we've essentially made our commissioners more accountable while taking on greater ownership by removing voter rights from the adult mentor. It also changed from the committee to a commission. Having a new identity for on many changes, we hired Emily O'Neal to help us create a logo. Having a brand or identity was incredibly important to us. During a three-month process which included giving Emily feedback on the artistic direction, we improved artwork that represents us in a professional way. This past year, the youth commission also joined social media. Operated by an adult mentor, we connected with the community through Facebook, Instagram and Twitter. Of course, not everything changed. We continued our commitment to community service.
As an organization, we participated in four local community service events. Riding up the Night Crafting with Santa, Country in the Park, Went to Bird Festival and the Extravaganza Pancake Breakfast. Through these events, we learned how to event planning and budget projections with the help of an adult mentor. It was also an opportunity to involve our classmates to serve the community. Acting with Santa, for instance, involved 44 volunteers from both high schools. I would like to highlight one of the community service events that I'm particularly proud of. The Pancake Breakfast. This year's Pancake Breakfast was successful. In partnering with the Galt Lines and Rotary Club, we were able to raise over $1,000 for the John Moran Scholarship. As I was chair of the planning for these consecutive years, I was able to see the inclines of success within the year's events. The amount of support from outside sources and better organization was able to advance the success of this year's Pancake Breakfast.
One of the things we're most proud of this year is taking on a community issue. This was something new to us. However, during our retreat, we wanted to make a difference. And it was important that we selected a project that we can successfully complete in a year. After touring the cow waste facility, we learned about the lack of opportunities to safely dispose of hypodermic beetles. This presented an opportunity to serve the community in a way we haven't done before. The commissioners Brandon Garcia and Andrew Klop spent part of the year researching the issue. But coming to city council with the problem was not good enough. It was important to model the civic engagement by presenting solutions that were research based. We're extremely proud of Brandon and Andrew for presenting our proposals to this past spring. We understand that Public Works is continuing their research on the community issue and we eager years yearly away the outcome. This year presented additional opportunities for the youth.
As youth commissioners, we serve as the voice for the youth. So we're more intentional about our public speaking opportunities. This fall, five commissioners sat at the table and shared their high school experiences at the educational summit. It was a great opportunity to give the high school district feedback as part of their LCAP process. In addition to presentations to the Galt City Council this year, we've also had the opportunity to present at the Galt Lines and Rotary. These are meaningful experiences that will benefit us beyond our roles as Galt Youth
This year also took us beyond the city limits. In February, we went to San Mateo to experience the conference with workshops completely run by youth. We were inspired by the keynote speaker, a youth that organizes birthday parties for foster kids. The Grand Ancient Community Summit also allowed us to engage with the youth in softens. We have participated in youth-run breakout session and heard about youth success stories. These opportunities are incredibly important to us because it shows us the possibilities and power of youth. It gives us something to strive for. We also got the chance to meet some elected officials at these events. This past spring, we also had an ice cream show with newly elected Assemblymember Cooper to discuss his political priorities this upcoming year. It helps to continue to engage with our state and federal elected officials as well as our county and city and municipal elected officials with us.
So there are many wonderful things that we learned while being on the Galt Youth Commission. As you can see on this slide, there are invaluable skills that could be transferred into the world. At the heart of leadership is relationship, which we learned from our experience in the Extravaganza Pancake Breakfast. Our success will continue to grow if we continue to engage our youth in our community organizations.
This was perhaps one of the most productive years and we're really excited about the progress. However, our work is never done. Some of the things we would like to address includes getting more youth involved in our communities. I think we made some strides this year, especially if you look at our recruitment efforts. Two years ago, we had eight applications for seven positions. This year, we had 46 applications for four positions. So the word is getting out. We are making a difference and getting recognized. We're hoping social media will continue to help in this area. We also need to continue fostering relationships with community service organizations and hopefully partner better with the city to bring the youth voice to the table on projects impacting us. For instance, we appreciate the opportunity to insert the youth voice in the conversation for this next Delta College Education Center. We hope there are other projects like Safe Bots for Schools where we can engage. We're also hoping to find more opportunities to develop more skills while serving on the commission. For instance, while we're exposed to public speaking skills, we would like to learn more. We're grateful that the city council approved our budget proposal which will allow the adult mentors to incorporate a toast method curriculum this year. We're hopeful that our future community service efforts are purposeful in developing skills while serving the community. Our approach to community service should be more than gaining hours and signatures. With the help of the adult mentors, we would greatly benefit from the opportunity to develop skills that will help us be college and career ready. The youth commission would benefit if we were better connected. Coming from two different schools and involved with a lot of activities, we have a lot of challenges getting together, especially since we need only one of us. So we need to work on creating an environment that is safe and encourages everyone on the commission to contribute.
We would like to thank you for the opportunity to serve on the Galt Youth Commission. We learned a lot this year and had a great time. A special thanks to council member Barbara Payne. Your enduring support to the youth in our community doesn't go unnoticed. Finally, we're lucky to have our adult mentors this year. Each mentor donated exceptional time and were dedicated to giving us their time to support us and watch us grow as a Galt Youth Commission. We are forever grateful for their support and dedication.
Are there any questions we can answer?
Questions, council? I think you've done a fantastic job.
That was one of the best presentations I've seen.
Very good. Great. I think it's just there to look pretty because it's not working. Okay, moving on to the Sacramento Environmental Commission report to council, Mr. Bailey.
Good evening. It's good to be here. Thank you for having me here. Had a chance to view you on TV, but I know when you talk about somebody and they're out there watching, it's always great. I'm not really here as, on behalf of the Sacramento Environmental Commission because I'm technically not a member. My term is up on the 30th of June. But I am here promptly to say thank you for the last 10 years of serving the three cities and on the other side to be a potential candidate for reappointment for the next three years. I'm here for key purposes, but it's been an honor to serve the last 10 years on the Okay. I've served from January 2005 to 2015. Originally, I believe you had a person that served for nine years, retired from the vault and then nobody served. So the position was vacant for two years. I have retired from the city of Folsom as mayor, asking if I would continue, if I would be willing to serve that one year. So I served that one year, plus an additional nine years. I've been on the commission for 10 years. Every year, they do put it out, people to apply. It's a little irritating because I would like to see more people apply. Tells me that there are people that aren't aware of what's going on in government and in positions and the, because it is exciting to be part of, of serving the community, serving the, as you know, being on the council to speak for the people and it's really exciting. But I've had the honor, privilege to do that. The, I'll talk a little bit more about the history of the SEC in a minute. This is my bio on the website. I work military. I served with the city of Folsom for 34 years in different capacities. I retired as superintendent of utilities and then take the public works that I was in charge of. But my expertise is in solid waste and transportation. I was also the transit manager and I designed the computer systems for the city, especially the police department. The vision for the SEC is a sustainable and quality environment for our community. That's the vision of the commission itself. The mission is to provide leadership and advice to the county and the cities within the jurisdiction. We do more of the last in history. It started in 1988 by ordinance. It isn't by ordinance, the commission, and it covers a wide range of environmental areas. You look at the charter under the ordinance, it covers a lot of things. It used to do a lot more because it was just the city of Folsom, Gulf, Isleton, city of Sacramento and the county. Since it was established, we have gained three cities. It was Height, Oak Grove and Rancho Porto. But the purpose of the commission itself was to be the advisory board secondarily, be the advisory board for the EMD. And I hope you know what the environmental management department for the county is. I'm going to put it up here because most people don't understand that the county environmental management department serves a lot of services for all of the cities within the jurisdictions in the county. It's the county COOPA, it has hazardous material, it does, you see the green, yellow and red tags on restaurants? They are inspected by the county EMD. They do it for you and they charge some of these things. The SEC, the Environmental Commission was involved with establishing that program. It's a great program. They do the inspection, they do flood control, they do hazardous waste, pools, storm drains, underground storage tanks, low ground storage tanks. I would recommend at least every couple of years, you have the EMD come and share with you the things they do for you because they do charge your citizens. One of the things that we do on the commission is we review the fees that they charge your citizen for those services. And that's really one of the big things we do. And it's very important because it's like taxation without representation. Those three cities that aren't part of the commission are still getting services from the county because they don't have a say in what's going on. The jurisdictions are Sacramento County, the city of Folsom, Gulf, Isleton and Elk Grove joined the commission, Elk Grove, about six months ago. What happened was, every year, we send a letter encouraging the cities to join. Elk Grove, during the process of building their hazardous material recovery facility down in 99, they realized that they needed some input on that facility and their city council wanted more input. And there are not very many commissions and jurisdictions that will take your information, evaluate it and give you their opinions. That was one of the purposes of the SEC. The SEC is not a board of members that are just half hazardous. In the ordinance, it states that the members need to have some expertise in certain areas. When there is a vacancy, they usually ask for somebody in a certain area. We deal with a lot of different areas. My expertise is solid waste, transportation and computers. We have people there. We have an attorney, we have a doctor, we have consultant. It's a very, the expertise on the board is vast. And we have some people with Caltrans, some people with different expertise and it's a very wide range of people. They all are experts for some kind of field we deal with. And so Elk Grove joined realizing that they needed a little bit more input. And some people say, well, that doesn't make sense. Well, it's like having a commission that oversees the police department. A lot of times, the council would like to have somebody do that or a public work department or somewhere else. The environmental management department does so much stuff for all of the cities and counties that this was established to have some input. Their budgets are not passed unless they come through the SEC in approval and then we send a letter to the county supporting what they're doing or not supporting. These are the areas that the SEC is involved with and you'll see there's lots of areas we deal with a lot of these things. Solid waste and energy, air, planning, water, environment. We go from plastic bags to sucking water out of the delta. We discuss those things as a board. We support something, we support very few things. In the report I gave you, that's all we've supported in the last year. Commentant on, we have a lot of people come and ask for our support. We, very balanced group. There are no real activists on there. We have an agenda, we look at things, we try to give a balanced opinion. So somebody will have an outside opinion and we think it's very good. One of the things that has happened and one of the reasons Elk Grove did join, there used to be an organization called SWAC, Solid Waste Advisory Council. It got very large and it ended up having members on it that were actually appointed people that were overseeing appointed people. It was kind of awkward and it went away. I was involved with that group on what side of the city and then after I retired, I became appointed by the city at one point. And we dissolved that group, which was kind of nice because it became obsolete and I'm proud to see those things because sometimes you need to dissolve some things you don't need anymore. We have taken on some of those things and overseeing some of those and having people come bring some new programs and things to the SEC thing. What do you think? How does this look county-wise? Because some of these things affect everybody. And we deal with a lot of different things and we give our opinions that are bad. Some people like our opinions, some people don't. Every meeting, every monthly meeting, we do go over what's going on with the environmental management department to make sure that they're on track, what they're doing. We look at their inspections they put out. We do about 2,000 inspections of everything in the world during the month and we have talked about those things, talk about new programs they have, how they are with their budgets and those things. We're televised three times a year. We do have people come and talk to us about different things. I've listed the last, I think the last year's meetings in your report I gave you, the topics we've talked about and looked at. We are an organizational member of the streets council. We do support streets council and usually are involved with those in our different And then we actually review things for the county. We did, have done for the county and the city, we've looked at the different plans that they've been doing. And then we do environmental awards every year and in our list, the last two years of environmental awards and those are awards that are nominated by citizens in your communities. And then we evaluate those and we give those awards out usually in the April televised meeting. This year, we did it last night, because it's a big deal. We do go out on some tours. We hit the railroad yard for a day and we went to Folsom Dam. I don't know if you've been to the new Folsom Dam they're building. A lot of people don't know, they spent a billion dollars up there. And we didn't know what they were doing really. Because there's a lot of jurisdictions involved and while we were there, we realized that the new dam would allow them to go over Folsom Lake by 50 feet more than they can now, which was kind of surprising. We wanted to get rid of some water. We had a lot of discussion, why are we doing this? It was a billion dollar project. It was a really good discussion and we got to question that. We do letters of support and comments on different things you can see here, what we've done this last year. And I've attached those, you can read those over and most of those come to you as the agendas and the minutes come to all the cities to be posted every month. One comment I'd like to make, the key role is to advise county on what they're doing, the Sacramento Environmental Management Department. And we also can advise the jurisdiction on issues that they bring to us and make comments on that. And we do do that, try to do that and give a good balance opinion. It's also an excellent source that hasn't been utilized the way it used to be because it doesn't really have all of the cities involved. But I think if people understood what it did for you as a potential, if you have there, it might use more. And I, three goals I think it should have for the next two or three years is to get the two cities, other two cities to join and then all, the whole county would be represented. That the commission itself without an annual report of what's, what's been going on last year. And that I encourage all the jurisdictions like the city of Galt to host a meeting and you might get more of your citizens involved if there's actually a meeting here and they can see what goes on. And it is exciting because a lot of things are discussed. Any questions? I've gone, I have a lot of things to talk about. I apologize. I apologize if I talk too fast.
Counsel, questions?
No.
Not that I'm impressed with the overall diversity that the commission goes after. I mean, it's, I had no idea that that was the task for the commission.
Yeah, we deal with a lot of different things. It's kind of funny, because I worked for the city of Fulton in 1972. I think it used to be called Used to Meet. Every month, the three pairs would get together, and I usually was invited to those because I was involved with organizing the commission itself. Because originally, it was part of the air board. It broke off, the air board went its own way. And he used to be more involved, because the three cities seemed to always not get the say. And that person from Gulf did always have an opinion. They always spoke up. And I learned a lot from that. And it was nice because he represented the three cities, not just Gulf. And I represent the cities, not just. I happen to live there. And I do encourage people to apply for each position. It would be nice if you had five people applying. Actually, the county of Sacramento, they have to interview because they get five or 10 people, five for one position, and they have to interview and select the person, which is nice, because they just understand what's going on.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to M1, which is the reappointment to the Sacramento Environmental Commission for Robert Bailey. Do I have any discussion or motion?
I move.
I second.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Campion, and a second by Councilmember Powers. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne, aye. Councilmember Hewer, aye. Councilmember Campion, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Powers, aye. Mayor Cruz, aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice presentation.
All right. We've got a late call here, but we're pulling I-5 from the consent calendar. And moving on to the public comments section, we have one speaker, Mr. Walters. Before you go any further, is this a continuation of what you've been bringing forward to us before?
It is.
Well, I can tell you, as a member of this body, we have made a decision on it. We're going to continue what we've been doing. If there's anything additional you'd like to add to that, that's fine. But we're going to continue with what we've brought on as a body. Tended to do what? The rate studies and implement the rate study, rates after it's completed. We're not going to break it off to one individual.
What are you going to do with the money that I'm losing?
Sir, everybody's paying the same rate, so...
Well, I understand, but what are you going to do with the money that I'm losing? You haven't addressed that issue. You think that's fair? That you can just arbitrarily say you're going to go with whatever you want to do and people lose money? Well, so be it. You're just going to go ahead and do it. What kind of a city is run like that?
A city that takes care of all of its citizens.
Well, you're not taking care of me, are you?
I think we are.
Oh, by taking more money from you than you should?
Has your rate increased?
Pardon me?
Has your rate increased as a result?
Oh, it's going to increase.
You don't know that yet. That's what you have to do.
What's I doing? I'll make you a bet right now that this rate study, which is not a rate study, it's a rate study increase study. It's all about how much more money you're going to charge us. That's what it's all about. Are you going to come back and say, well, gee, we looked at the rate study, we spent $120,000, and now, all of a sudden, we're going to come back and say, oh, it's going to be a 3% or 4% decrease? Do you really think that's going to happen? Hell, no!
Thank you, sir. Moving on to consent calendar on item I-5, Mr. Campion?
Yes. This is the award of contract for water rate study and contract for related budget I guess first off, I thought this was going to be a water rate analysis, which I know this report and contract would include, but it also does an update on the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan. That hasn't been discussed, to my knowledge, before counsel has it.
No, but as part of presenting back to you, to the council, any findings and recommendations, we would certainly discuss key drivers that would form the basis for making our recommendations. In this case, we're not looking at the entire CIP.
Just the water portion.
We're looking at completed CIP projects that have an impact on future water rates. For instance, if we incurred $2.2 million in debt for the water meter program, that is going to have some future effect on rates. So as we look at our rate structure, look at our debt service, look at our operating and maintenance costs, look at our long-term reserve requirements, those are all the factors that we've looked at as we update and review our current rates for sustainability. And then we present any alternative rate structures as options for your consideration.
But isn't a lot of that information, at least, already provided within the existing CIPs and budget documents? I mean, I guess I don't understand, when I see something that says Capital Improvement Plan Update, I take that to mean that you're going to take a look at the components of the CIP Water Division and see essentially, you know, what is needed based on future need? I mean, that's the purpose of the CIP. And I guess my second question is, is didn't we just recently update that document?
We updated our master plans, but we never revisited our rate structure as a result of that master plan. It was on our, sort of, I believe, at the time, it was part of preparing for the general plan update, was getting those master plans in place. The final step in that process would be then, is to review your rates relative to those CIPs and determine if your rates are still adequate, or if both your impact fees and your user fees are adequately reflecting what your capital needs will be. And obviously, growth-driven capital needs would be paid for by impact fees, water impact fees on development. If there are identified deficiencies, which there were, Simlehorn Waterline project was an identified deficiency, and so a portion of your user fees would be used to either replace or upgrade. Your well rehabilitation program would be example of existing user fees would be paid to upgrade those facilities to continue to use them.
And that raises another issue or question that I had, because it talks about the data collection, as well as a discussion on reserves and reserve policies, discuss debt policies for capital funding, evaluate various policies and options available for meeting the city's goals and objectives related to the Water Division. Nowhere in here do I see where the policy issues would be presented before counsel, before a decision is made as to how they're going to be incorporated into a final document. I mean, this all looks like it is, all policy issues are being done at staff level with no input from counsel.
If there were new policies proposed, we would certainly bring those to counsel for input and advice. Typically, what we're doing is we're looking at our current impact fee policies, our current general plan policies, any rate direction we've been given from previous council meetings, and having our consultant incorporate those policies into his rate review in terms of equitable application of fees, are we appropriately assigning benefit within our Prop 218 constraints.
I'm not necessarily opposed to evaluating the policies, but I, at the same time, don't want that the, that we're to assume that the existing policies are what we want to carry forward. Quite frankly, I don't know what all those policies are. So I mean, it's hard to even discuss it without knowing what they are and how they are to be assumed to be implemented. I mean, that is a concern, because that will go right into the underlying components of whatever the rate structure turns out to be. I mean, that is a concern of mine.
And you're obviously reading for something specific? Are you looking at?
I'm looking at their scope of...
Hold proposal?
Their scope of work. I'm on page 12 of their scope of work. That's under project initiation and data collection. There's a follow-up question, too. It says that, you know, they'll give you, give the city a detailed list of data required prior to meeting, so that all appropriate data in required format can be forwarded to RFC, which is the consultant. My question is, do we know that the required and requisite data is in a format that we can readily access and provide to them? Because I know in the past, we've had problems with, in terms of compatibility of information and how it's being transmitted and so forth. So the question is, has that been resolved?
Well, just prior to that, you see the kickoff meeting, and that's to talk about what data they need, what format they needed in. Clearly, we can't ask a consultant to look at our historic and projected water demands, water revenues, water costs, without giving them that information. So we would furnish them our budgets, historical usage, and information that we can readily extract from our fee billing system as far as history. We look at our water production, look at our operating and maintenance costs. We would furnish that all to the consultant, in whatever form we have it, and it'd be their responsibility to assimilate that into their review of our rate structures and adequacy.
Well, I, that sounds good, except that this contract doesn't say that. It says it will be in required, in their required format. And I don't know what their required format is. I don't, again, I'm just, I'm just reading what it says.
Having not had the kickoff meeting, because we haven't yet awarded the contract, if they, if they need it in a certain format that's readily producible, fine. If it's not available in that format, we have no intention of creating with staff time documentation, it'd be their job to convert it. For instance, if we had it in a PDF and they wanted to put it into an Excel spreadsheet, that would be part of their analysis. And so their specific wording here is not intended, in our opinion, to tie our hands as to what we have to do. They've given us a proposed scope of work, and we'll be meeting, in the first meeting, to refine that scope. And they've given us a not-to-exceed price to do that level of work.
Okay. Just two other questions or observations. It says in the report that only, this was the only consultant that submitted a proposal, and apparently you had an old proposal, or there was an existing proposal? Is that what I'm understanding?
Right. Prior to council action, we had recommended, as part of our on-call consultant group, that we have some initial contract authorizations to proceed for our water, wastewater, and storm drain. One of our on-call consultants is West Jostin Associates. And with that original recommendation that we procure their services, along with one other firm for utilities, we also recommended that we have authority to award an initial contract to review and look at our rates and impact fees for those wet utilities. And so we already had that authorization available. When we got that proposal, it, we had some questions about the scope, we had some questions about the price. And given the price proposal they'd given us, we felt we owed it to counsel to get more than one proposal. We were, we said to the council at the time that anything that was over $100,000, we'd bring back for a formal RFP process. This wasn't at that level, but it was getting close. So in talking with the city manager, we agreed that we would go out and solicit additional proposals, which we went to four additional firms. And only one of those additional four firms actually provided a proposal.
Well, didn't HDR do the last analysis?
They did, and they declined after we waited three weeks on a proposal from them. They, and we were of the opinion they were going to propose to update their previous study, and they withdrew, and said they were not going to be able to meet our time.
So there was only a three-week turnaround? Is that what you're saying? For the proposal?
On the proposal, correct. Or, we don't think that is why they didn't propose. We think that a required completion of the study timeframe, based on other work that they'd committed to, they elected not to propose.
And that, and maybe we may end up going back out, because the timeframe that I see here outlined, I, quite frankly, am in disagreement with. The council workshop is scheduled for, or tentative is scheduled for October 6th of this year. The mock bills are then scheduled to go out in early November, less than a month later. But the city council will not take final action on the rates until December 15th. So any mock bill that goes out and mailed notice in late October may or may not have the right rate. I'm concerned that we start sending out mock bills again, whether it's current rate or a mock rate, and I don't know what the mock rate's going to be. It says it's going to be based on the new rate structure. That may or may not be right, because you won't know until the hearing adoption in December, the hearing for adoption. So I'm not comfortable sending out another mock bill until we know what these rates are. At least, as a council member, I think it's going to be too confusing. And I think what I would have rather seen is spend a little bit more time upfront and give the council an opportunity to have a selection of consultants and a range of approaches and cost, because really, I don't even know what the other cost was with the other proposal, because it wasn't in the report. I, I'm not prepared to go forward with this report tonight, I guess, in the end.
I'm concerned that, I understood that we were going to go out and do a water rate study. And this seems to be much more expansive than initially what I understood the initial proposal was, or the initial what we were going to do. This just seems, I just was a little surprised, one, about the increase in cost, because we were told, at some degree, that I'm just a little, I'm hesitant to spend that amount of money and money on one proposal.
Well, we have two, a couple of things. First of all, under the State Contract Act and our own procurement policies, when you hire a consultant, you must do a qualifications-based selection, not a price-based selection. And so as part of our reviewing the two proposals, we looked at who was the most qualified and presented the best proposal, best meeting the city's needs moving forward, including timing. It just so happens that the current consultant was $20,000 cheaper than the West Jost proposal was, order of magnitude. And so based on their qualifications and their ability to meet our timeframe, price can be a factor, but it can't be a D factor. And so based on their qualifications and the timeliness of their proposal, and the ability to save the city between $15,000 and $20,000, we recommend receipt. If you'd like a more formal RFP process, we can do that. That will delay the timeframes further, rolling out the mock billings if we do not proceed at this time, which will then delay the implementation of any final rates adopted in whatever timeframe that occurs, which then further exacerbates some of the concerns you've heard even tonight as to when we're going to implement these water rates. So we are here to do the will of the council, what we are, maybe in answer to Councilmember Campion's concern on, that we would bring in the council public workshop, proposed under our plan on October 6th, some of the policy and rate options in a workshop setting, open to the public to receive public input as well, along with our recommended rate structure that we would propose. We'd be looking at council concurrence or direction as to a different preferred option of the council. And with that option selected, or policy direction, we would proceed to put together the Prop 218 notice, which gives the public 45 days' formal notice of what the recommended rate structure would be. That would go out in late October, and then in early November, based on that public and council input on October 6th, as put in our formal Prop 218 notice, the first mock bill would be based on that proposed rate. Now, is that rate adopted yet? No, but neither are we charging the bills. We would be giving them a mock bill based on the proposed rate, and then we would come back in December with the rate hearing and adoption, assuming that there wasn't a majority protest. And then the final three mock bills would be based on the final approved rate. Typically, the historic, the history in Gulf has been that the proposed rates have generally been adopted as proposed. You can't raise them beyond what was put in the Prop 218 notice, but... You can't raise them beyond what was put in the Prop 218 notice, but the council and the public could protest those rates, and we could ultimately adopt something lower, and at which point, there could be some confusion. We would certainly, as part of putting out any mock bills, would be very careful, as part of our public education piece, is what the mock bill represents, what it's based on. It would be estimated rates that are proposed, not yet adopted, and there'd be a public review process to follow. So, we would certainly try to eliminate or minimize any confusion to the extent that we can communicate that with the notices that go out. So, we would certainly be cognizant of the potential for future confusion and try to educate as we go as to what the mock bill represents and what it doesn't represent.
I just have one concern about if we had, went out for an RFP before and didn't get that much response, are we, and we're going to go out for another one?
Who didn't go out for an RFP?
Who didn't?
That really was phone solicitation, or I don't know what you did.
We invited a total of five firms, initially West Jost was one of the original on-call, and, and so, they were initially invited to propose. We saw the scope and cost of their proposal. We felt that the city deserved to at least receive the opportunity for an additional proposal, or, or five, if we could get them. So, we solicited, invited four more firms that do water rate studies, that are known to us, to also submit proposals, and only one of those four firms submitted a proposal. Now, did we open it up to any and all consultants that would like? No, we did not, because we're under $100,000.
Well, and there was a short timeframe for them to respond, correct?
We typically would give three to four weeks for a very large project. We might give six weeks for a very, what do I, we're a very complex proposal. This was not deemed to be, rate studies are not highly unusual, they're not typically highly controversial in terms of what your options would be. And so, we put out a scope of work and, you know, didn't open it up to the world. Three weeks typically is a sufficient timeframe.
So, I understand the rate study. I still kind of stuck on, why, why are we wanting to update city's water master plan? I mean, it was done fairly recently.
The master plan would not be updated other than to look at what has changed since it was adopted in 2012. For instance, we have a casino proposal, we have a junior college proposal, we have a major annexation, and the city is investigating possibilities of further industrial annexations. Those are changes from what would have been looked at in 2012. Would those have any impact on current user fees? And if they would, then we would update that. And looking at our CIPs, we've completed several significant projects. We're about to complete the water meter installation. That's going to actually able to benefit, reduce costs on meter use. There are some increased costs for depth service that go with installing that infrastructure. So, we need to look at the, the pros and cons, or adds and deletes, what our operating costs are. The Simmerhorn has given us the ability to move water around, well rehabilitation's ended up in the last two years, that weren't contemplated necessarily in the CIP. So, we would want to take a quick look at those, as a consultant, look at what those might do to save us energy, save us water, look at our conservation plans. Those all affect the city's operating costs. While in looking at projected future costs, we need to look at what our last study did. They start with our previous study. They would look at what's changed since those studies, our CIP and our, our master plan, and then they would look at, and what's on the horizon, such as water consumption.
From my understanding, you say that part of what they would be looking at for, for the update, and just the master plan update, would be the impact of future projects could have on our water, because our water rate, our current water rate, what we need to assess with now?
The water rate study would be looking at current user fees, not capital growth projects, but they would look at the projects that are, that are on the horizon to ascertain whether that would have any impacts on our current user fees. Typically, that's going to, those types of projects will fall into our impact fee category, not our user fee category. But if we have aging facilities that are going to need to be upgraded, or if we want to look at purple pipe options for water recirculation within the city, you know, to serve existing needs, those would be capital projects that we would want to potentially look at, and how might those affect rates going forward?
I have one.
Probably, if I may, just to circle back. Our proposed rate study is not to look at long-term rate needs in far as rate increases, as you've heard from one gentleman earlier tonight. Our proposal is to look at whether the current rate structure is sustainable in light of some of the new recycling mandates, excuse me, those are supposed to be next, but in light of our conservation mandates of 32%. Our intention with this study is not to revisit or visit future potential rate increases that might be needed, other than known costs today. We would be remiss when we do a rate study not to update our current costs of service for our different customer classes, particularly in light of recent appellate court findings relative to certain cities' rate structures. We need to make sure that the study is thorough and looks at all of our customer classes and the cost of providing those services. And there are pieces in all of these, these things that we've just, and have been talking about, that could impact our costs of service for certain classes of customers. So, to be defensible in the future Prop 218 challenge, we need to have it looked at, all of those costs, who benefits from those various categories of improvements, and who should bear the cost for those. And that would go into our future rate recommendations. Now, we are not, one of the options would be, do you look at rate? You'll look at tiered rates. We, and there's sentiment that might not lead us in that direction, but it is one of the options, though, that probably ought to be looked at, and then council can give direction, public can give.
One of the questions that I was going to ask you, do you perceive the changes due to the drought requirements that were mandated to affect our whole water, master water plan?
It actually, the conservation mandate and the current conservation numbers that are being achieved by the residents and businesses in Gault are helping with the ability to defer the need for future wells, the, the need to expand treatment systems. And so, that actually, the conservations going on could lower our long-term costs.
And then the other question I had, after these mock bills go out, will there be time for input from both the council as well as the public?
Well, the final rate hearing is not until December 15th, as proposed in the schedule. And that would be the ultimate input from both the public as a Prop 218 hearing and from council as to the suitability of the proposed rates. Now, certainly in the workshop, we'd be looking for direction and input from the public, so that we, our proposal tries to find middle ground between various options that are out there.
Well, it looks like what you're trying to do is gather as much information as you can, as we move along with this whole rate structure, which, to me, makes sense. I've never found gathering whatever information we think will be helpful to make a decision a bad thing. So, I, I don't have a problem with this proposal. But that's just my opinion. And the other thing I wanted to say was, I'm glad, I think West Jost has been a good contractor for us in the past, but I'm glad to see that we are reaching out to somebody else, just to keep them honest, not that they're not.
Then I have to go with, if you've contacted five people that, you know, know their stuff and are familiar with our area and have come to our area, I don't have a problem with that either.
I only have one question. You mentioned this, this term again, and it makes me very nervous when I hear it. We have had court decisions regarding tiered rates. That shouldn't be even on the board right now. You don't need even potential liability going with that. Am I incorrect on this?
Well, the, the court actually affirmed that tiered rates are constitutional and allowed, but only if they're properly supported by a rate study nexus to cost of producing, the cost of the tiered rates have to, I'm sorry, the, the rates you're proposing have tied to the actual costs of producing the water, hence the thoroughness of the study.
But, the way I understand it, given the rates that you're going to be coming up with, how are you going to come up with the tiered rates, then?
Tiered rates would be one of multiple options that would be available. We're not saying we're recommending a tiered rate, but I think we'd be remiss not to look at that option and what that, what the pros and cons of going to a tiered rate would be relative to conservation, relative to potentially financing rebate programs for those who conserve, you know, toilet exchange programs, TARP exchange programs.
I, I would have no problem with that. I mean, I have no problem with what you presented us here. It's just, I have a real serious issue with, like I said, penalizing people. I mean, you should be giving them a carrot, not a stick.
And our job would be to provide you with information, options, and recommendations, and you give us direction on what you like. I will tell you that some recent studies, as testimony of a state hearing, they're finding that the people who might benefit most from tiered rates are low-income residents and fixed-income residents, because they can control how much water they use. Under a flatter rate structure, they sort of get a one-size-fits-all rate.
Okay. Any further discussion from council?
Yes. I, I mean, I, in reviewing the proposal, actually, I think it's a good proposal, but it's beyond what I was expecting to be on the agenda, in terms of the review on the capital improvement plans and the capital, and the master plans. I don't think that's bad, that, a bad idea. As a matter of fact, it probably makes some sense, particularly if they're working expanding like the Purple Pipe program and others. The one area, or the two areas that I do have is, I want to make sure that all, any policy assumptions that are made, that go into what drives this rate structure, they are clear, they are delineated, and council is fully aware of all of those assumptions. That's number one. And I think the second thing is, is that I, I, I don't think we should send out mock bills until we know what that rate is. That's just my thinking.
Well, you know, we have, what, four mock bills that are going out? I think that gives us plenty of time to get the input. If we just wait till one sends it out, that's it, you don't really have time to, you know, to get all the input and get the questions answered, because obviously, there's going to be a lot of discussion and a lot of talk before this is finalized.
I hope so.
Yeah. That's why, that's why we're doing all this, to generate those questions.
The general public gets involved, is what I hope.
I'm sure that's going to happen.
Well, the, the problem is, they usually don't pay attention until they have to write a check, and that's the problem.
You know, I feel like we've been, I think the city's been really good about putting the information out, and our water bills, and saying, you know, what's happening and everything. I don't think that's going to change. I think we've done a good job, and I think we will continue.
I would agree that we need to hold off on the mock bills until we actually know that the rate's going to be, it's, it's not, I don't think it's fair to the public, that the bill comes out at one rate, and then it's, in fact, the study shows that the rates need to increase, or need to be modified, that we now send out a different bill with the rate. But, I mean, I think the proposal was good.
I just agree. I mean, I, I would go along with proposal absent that section. Maybe we can deal with that later.
Steve, well, the mock bills, let me think, how to explain this? Okay, you'll have a mock bill that goes out, and the public will look at it, and you'll get input, correct?
We'll give them an example of what their future bill could look like
Could look like.
Under the new rate, or proposed rate structure, for the same amount of usage.
Do you think that would change over the four mock bills that you're sending out?
Well, we will be giving them a mock bill for July and August, and then their usage will change in September and October, which would be the second mock bill. So, these notices will be customized to their use.
But, no, but what I mean, with the criteria for determining those mock bills, will that change during?
First one would be based on our proposed rate, and under our current schedule, the final three would be based on the adopted rate.
Okay.
After the public hears.
Okay.
So, it would still have three billing periods that they could work from?
That would be our proposal.
Those will be the calls.
There's four, is that three billings after the first mock bill? Is that what you're saying?
The first mock bill is August, July, August?
No.
We would mail the first mock bill in November, after the Prop 218 notice goes out, so it'd sort of be a two-piece education there, and we'd let them know it's based on the proposed rate, or what their usage was in the prior few months. So, we'd actually be delaying that first mock bill to allow that rate notice to have gone out, along with its public education piece. The final three would, would be delayed to make sure they occurred after the final adoption and give us time to make any tweaks based on council direction.
The other thing, we are actually way ahead of what our deadline is to get the water meters installed and operational as far as billing, correct?
Generally, yes. There, there are two deadlines that the city is supposed to be complying with. One is to convert new construction to meters, and then to bill on those meters. That requirement was by the year 26, 26, for older areas in town, excuse me. We're in compliance with newer areas already. So, we're ahead of the 2026 timeframe. However, there's another deadline that says, once you put meters in, you are to be billing actual usage within one year. So, we're bumping our heads against that one-year requirement.
Okay.
I'm not aware of any fines that are proposed if you fail to meet it, but it was kind of a law that, once you put meters in, you allow one year to transition, mock bills, whatever it might be, and then you begin to bill on that.
Okay, thank you.
Kurt, you have something else?
Yes, but I didn't write it down. I think, I was trying to figure out, on the mock bills, you're saying that the three mock bills would go out, out after the hearing? Is that, did I hear you correctly?
The final three, they'd be for usage months prior, but the mock bill we give them would be based on the final adopted rate, as an example of what their future fees could look like.
Is that, is that consistent with this timeframe that's in our staff report?
I believe so.
Yes, sir. My whole point on this, thank you. My whole point on this was that I've had my meter installed nine months, so I have three months to go before you start building, building me. That isn't June of next year. That's this year. So, what are you going to do? I'm going to demand that you adhere to that and start building me within a year.
I think what I understood you to say, though, is when all of the meters are installed, not as each one is installed?
Yeah.
The state legislation may or may not be clear and specific on that, on exactly. I don't think the state intends us to roll out water bills one, one by one for each customer, and we're in the process of actively doing the citywide installation. I can imagine that there are no penalties proposed in the legislation, or state legislation can't. So, I think they would be looking for a reasonable pullout of compliance.
Okay. So, the proposal, or the staff report says the initial set of mock billings would reflect the proposed rate, and the final three would reflect the final rate.
Yes, absolutely.
And the idea is, then, people can get prepared for what they're going to pay. Get some free months to budget, or, or look at what they're going to be facing, or three billings.
The intent of the mock bill was, was to give people an idea of, that it had been flat rate and have no idea how much water they've been using. An opportunity to adjust to their usage, but more importantly, and if they have sticker shock based on their historic usage, they've got a period of months to look at their irrigation systems, to look for leaks, to look for toilet valves that are stuck, to, to change out appliances, like, you know, energy-saving rebates on washers and dishwashers and the like. you know, energy-saving rebates on washers and dishwashers and the like. So, it's to give them, and our four mock bill is the council's prior direction, that's eight months to adjust your lifestyle. If you're concerned with what your future bills could look like, you've got eight months to make adjustments before you get a lot.
And you mentioned it's a sticker shock. For me, it would be a wake-up call. If you want people in here for the Prop 218, that's the quickest way to get us, when they see that sticker shock.
And that sort of goes back to what I mentioned a moment ago, that some of the research that's just in, the conservation rates, they're carried by the Water Board, since they're under executive order to encourage local agencies to consider conservation rate, said another way, tiered rates typically. And part of the study that came back out of the University of Southern California, looking at a large metropolitan water district with some large low-income areas and fixed-income groups, and there were those early results that end of a first-of-a-kind study, show that the people who were objected to, and able to affect their behavior the most and benefit the most from a low base tier were those in low-income or fixed-income groups because they had motivation the same way.
Well, somewhere along the line, people are going to get motivation to conserve water, along with saving money.
Can I ask a question? On the, on the schedule, it, it talks about the, it says workshop on rate options up to October 6th. That's a regular city council meeting. So, is it possible that we have a workshop and a scheduled meeting? Because I think it would, you know, a workshop normally don't work in this, in this setting.
We would welcome a special meeting or an afternoon workshop. We picked a regular meeting date because we know that's scheduled.
Right.
Then look to council if they would like to have a special session. Our request would be that it would be in this general timeframe to allow us to get our rate notices out by the end of the month. We need a couple of weeks to work up our rate notices based on the direction given. We might have to go back to our rate consultant and I want to look at a variation on the option that we presented. So, we need a little bit of time after we get direction from council to finalize our rate notices.
So, if you had, if you had the, the final rate options, or, and I assume council's endorsement of the final plan, which is that that's what would be presented basically at the, is that at the October 6th meeting? That is the final plan?
Rate options, policy implications.
Okay. Would it, would it be too late if we did a workshop in the beginning of October and then hit the 20th, October 20th meeting?
Both. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, do, do an actual workshop with the consultant, and then hopefully they would have what they consider to be the final draft at the workshop, and if we add any minor tweaks, have a meeting on the 20th to make any final changes. I mean, I'm just asking.
It's doable. It's putting us in about a three or four working day timeframe to finalize our rate notices, which have to get printer, get both printed, get both mailed, which typically takes about a week to do. So, we, we don't have a lot of time, and that's about the latest we can mail it and meet our 45-day notice requirement for on December 15th. Now, if we want to push the December 15th hearing until after New Year's, we build some more time to schedule. Our goal, instead of this schedule up, was to try and honor the timelines we presented previously on the day, and not push the backend out for go-live because there was sensitivity to how fast we were moving. So, we tried to hold the backend of the process, which is putting a little bit of pressure on the front end of the process.
What if instead, and it's just an idea, instead of moving it forward, we move it back into September, the last week of September?
The workshop?
Workshop.
We would love to do that, but we also have to get the consultant time to do the rate study and review the options with us, so.
Trying to work with you here.
Well, and so.
Well, would it be easier just to?
Options would be any day of the week prior to, or the week prior, if you wanted to do an additional study session, you know, October, anytime after October 1st, I would think we'd be prepared to do that meeting. And then we could bring back final consideration on October 6th in the evening during your session. We can do an afternoon session on the 6th and come back in the evening.
Yeah.
That doesn't give us much time to make changes from any guidance that was given at the workshop. Not making final recommendations, you know, until the rate notices go out, and we have a little bit of time to react.
I would be unavailable that week. So, is there any, is there any, is there any reason why we couldn't push it out on the, on the tail end then? I mean.
Move it to the next meeting?
Just move, no, just move, the, the whole schedule would be bumped. If we went ahead, we held the workshop, say, the week of the 5th, and then scheduled for the 20th, then we'd have to push everything out after that, by 14 days, or thereabouts. I mean, I don't know if someone.
You mean, just stretch the whole thing out?
Stretch it out. Stretch it out an additional 10 days to 14 days.
What would that do to us?
A couple of options. We can do that. One option would be, we can try to hold to December 16th, see how the hearing, the workshop goes.
Okay.
And if we don't get major, you know, re-study direction of additional options, we might still be able to get the notice out by the last week of October, which is what that will be. If council, basically, in that notice, we have to announce when the hearing date. So, if you wanted to give us general direction that, that if we can hold to December 15th, fine. If not, two more options would be a special meeting in December or a week or two later. Now, we're into the holiday season. So, our recommendation would be just to move it out until January 15th.
Right.
And we could certainly do that. Then we would just use the direction of, so what do you want to do with the mock bills? Do we proceed with two mock bills based on the proposed rate, and, and two of the final rate, or do we push the whole schedule back?
I would prefer to push the whole schedule for him to do it. The, the other thing, I want to make sure that, you know, council has sufficient time to review the report ahead of time. I don't want to get it, you know, two days, three days ahead of time and, and have the workshop and then have final decisions. I mean, you, you know, we need time to read that as well. So, I, I would rather see us take a little bit more time in the preparation rather than just pushing it for purposes of staying with the schedule.
Is that part of what has to be decided on this resolution that we're looking at tonight?
Well, they've got a schedule on here.
Yeah, that's part of the schedule.
Tonight, all we're doing is awarding the study contract and all the rest of this.
And we can, we can stipulate to the consultants that we want to extend that if we, if we feel necessary. I mean, that's not really what we're voting on tonight. That, we've got to be changed.
We have no problem with more time to prepare.
Yeah.
Okay. Given that, do we have any further discussion on this matter?
I, if we're going to move forward with this, I would rather give us the time now so that we know that, where we are in the schedule.
So, are you saying that you want to include that we stretch it out
Stretch it out.
In this proposal, or?
Yes, yeah. Only to the extent that, you know, we ensure that we have a workshop where everybody can ask whatever questions they want, and they've had the documents at sufficient time to review, and then if there are some minor changes, they can get to either a regular or special meeting, and then, you know, stick as close as we can to it, but I don't think the schedule should drive the process.
Yeah, I agree.
Is that your motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Campion. You're going to have to write that out in one way, shape, or form. And second by Vice Mayor Payne. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. Okay. Let's buy a little vote. Moving on to the rest of consent. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved to approve the remainder of the consent calendar as proposed.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Payne. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Powers. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. Okay. Moving on to City Council's office. Our strategic plans. I'm making my mistake. You got it. July 14th, the council met with department heads to continue our three-year goal, and every six months we do so to update and make modifications as we need. And each council member had a section that they were responsible for, and we'll be reading off as we go. So, we'll start off with enhance and maintain infrastructure and facilities. By August 1st, our Public Works Director, working with consultant, will complete design plans for the construction of the C Street Central Gulf Complete Streets project. By August 15th of 2015, the Public Works Director will ensure completion of the Police Department re-roofing. At the August 18th, 2015 city council meeting, Councilmember Vice Mayor Barbara Payne and Mayor Mark Cruz, working with management team and the Sacramento Public Library Authority, will develop conceptual recommendations and present to the city council for direction, physical expansion of the library facility. By January 15th of 2016, the Finance Director, working with the City Manager and Public Works Director, will develop recommendations for a citywide equipment replacement plan and present it to the city council for action. By January 15th, 2016, the Public Works Director, working with the consultant and input from the community, will update the master plan for the Fourth Street open space and parking lot and present to the city council for action. And as a future item, which means it's probably more than six months out, the Public Works Director, with input from the management team, will prioritize the building maintenance services that need to be funded in 2016, 2017. You're going to be one busy man for the next six months. Next clause, where am I? Enhance economic development. That was Councilmember Hewer.
Item one, monthly, the City Manager will report to the city council on the results of Delta College locating south of Gulf and north of Littler Road. By October 1st, 2015, City Manager, working with Mayor Mark Cruz, Councilmember Kurt Campion, the management team and an outside attorney will begin negotiations with Wilton Rancheria Casino to fully mitigate potential impact of casino projects on the city of Gulf. Item three, by October 1st, 2015, the City Manager will hire an economic development manager. Item four, at the November 3rd, 2015 city council meeting, the Community Development Director will obtain, will obtain feedback from affected property owners regarding potential city-initiated annexation of expanded industrial park and Twin Cities Highway 99 commercial and present the results to the city council. Item five, by January 15th, 2016, the Community Development Director, with input from the Planning Commission and the city council, will submit an application to Lasto for Eastview annexation. Item six, by January 15th, 2016, the City Manager, working with the Economic Development Manager and the Community Development Director, will identify and market to brokers and developers potential retail dining and entertainment opportunities for December 12th for commercial property and other commercial sites within the city.
Thank you. Next will be improved financial stability, and that's Councilmember Campion.
We only had one new one this, this go-around. I'll briefly touch on the others. Research recommend to the city council action on the extension of the CARF, which is a fee analysis covered by associated, to cover associated technology, support financial systems citywide caused by growth. Finance directors in charge, that's to be done by January 15th. Also, extended out was an analysis on impact fees, water sewer, storm drain, continuing pursuing wind-down legislation in, in order to resolve the dispute with State Department of Finance regarding redevelopment agencies. Develop for consideration, public hearings on the northeast area and west side lighting landscape districts. And lastly, continue negotiations with cow waste regarding a collection services agreement and transfer station. Those are all to be done by January 15th.
Thank you, sir. And next will be attract, develop, and retain quality employees. Vice Mayor Payne?
Okay. By November 1, the City Manager will hire a police chief. Item number two, by November 15, the HR administrator will analyze the city's part-time and temporary staff turnover, why it has happened, and present the results with recommendations to the City Manager and the management team. To happen sometime in the future, each department head will evaluate all of their staffing levels and report their recommended changes by fiscal year 2016, 2017. If needed, to the HR administrator, including what benefit it would be to the department and the city if their temporary positions were made part-time and part-time positions were made full-time.
Thank you. And on number five, is enhanced cultural youth activities. Councilmember Powers?
At the August 18th, 2015 city council meeting, Parks and Recreation Director will present to the city council for direction, options for the state park, skate park improvements, including funding and cost estimates. By August 28th, 2015, the Public Works Director will complete the Harvey Park improvements funded by the Housing Grant Fund. By October 1st, 2015, the Police Chief, City Attorney, and Parks and Recreation Director will reevaluate the role of the city in the police activities league and make a recommendation to the city council for action. By January 1st, 2015, Councilmember Hewer and Councilmember Campion and the Parks and Recreation Director will identify options for recognizing Horvath Fletcher's contributions to our community and make a recommendation to the city council for action.
Thank you. And this year, we actually added a sixth item. The sixth item being improved long-term water sustainability for the city of Gulf. At the September 15th, 2015 city council meeting, the Public Works Director will present options to the city council for actions to enhance water conservation and leverage water meter data by providing customer engagement tools, examples of mobile, mobile apps, web portals, and other mailers. At the October 6th, 2015 city council meeting, the Public Works Director, with the input from the Finance Director, will implement the water meter transition plan and rate study. By October 15th of 2015, the Public Works Director will present to the city council for action, the hiring of a consultant to prepare a feasibility study for reclaimed water infrastructure options for the city of Gulf, for example, Purple piping, including a cost estimate. By January 15th, 2016, the Public Works Director will identify and pursue the water conservation and reclamation funding opportunities and report the results to the city council. And by January 15th, 2016, the Public Works Director and Parks and Recreation Director will present options and budget recommendations to the city council for action for improved water conservation at city-owned facilities, installing water conservation fixtures at city facilities, automated sprinklers and so forth. And last, as a future item, the Public Works Director will present to the city council for action, options for customer water conservation rebates and/or incentives, TARP replacements, low fixtures, low-flow toilets, things of that nature. As you can see, we've got our work cut out for us, especially our Public Works Director for the next six months. Okay. We can just receive the report, right? We'd have to vote on it since we were there?
Receive the report.
Yeah.
Requesting to receive.
Yes?
I think you have it in so much.
So, we just need a consensus?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to noise control standards. Mr. Rudolph?
Good evening again, Mayor, councilmembers. The city council recently adopted the Gulf Development Code, and that document contains some noise standards relating to new construction. We have some noise control standards also in Chapter 8.40 of the municipal code. Purpose of this ordinance is to create consistency between the new development code and Chapter 8.40. So, this ordinance would change the noise standards to those you recently adopted in the development code. Recommendation tonight is to introduce the ordinance, commending the Chapter 8.40, wait for reading, and continue to the next regular meeting for adoption. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council?
I noticed that there, the noise standard will apply to all zones now, whereas in the past, I believe, your commercial, industrial, or your non-residential type zones had
I believe your commercial, industrial, or your non-residential type zones had, or did, I don't know that they really had standards, simply because we didn't wish to impact, say, industry or commercial activity due to noise. That was done through separation and zoning. So I'm not sure, was that the intent, that we limit all commercial and industrial? Because I believe some of them would probably violate this.
Yeah, hold on. Tony, do you have any comment on that?
They don't really, other than it would be to actually protect the basic uses, but can't be mentioned. Generally, the non-residential really don't really necessarily need to, just through exterior.
Right.
Okay, so with that comment, why don't we continue this item, and we'll clean it up and bring it back in a future meeting?
Okay. Do you have one public comment on it?
Yes.
My good dear General Park company, we had an incident here, I think it was last week. As you know, as it gets hotter, you have to pour concrete earlier. Somebody turned us in, the police came out and told Jimmy Gates to, you know, next time we might have to shut you off. Well, that can't happen. If we don't pour, way back in the day, 30 years ago, we used to pour at 5:00. As the temperature gets on that 105, 110 degrees, what happens? That concrete dries on top, and that's where you get a lot of crackage. And you can do things to create, to help that, but it's still a crack. So I'm wondering if this noise ordinance, is that part of what I'm saying about when you said about construction? Is that part of what we're talking about tonight? Because if it is, that's really important to us, that we'd be able to have concrete trucks. Now, remember, in this example, this is once, once one house. It does it every day, because when we pour a house, we pour the house complete with the house and the garage. So it's done. Now, the flat work, usually it's at 7:00 or 8:00, but in the morning, doing a house, you have to do it early because of that scenario.
Because I recall, the noise ordinance allowed you to start at 6:00 in the morning. If it was a noise complaint, I don't know if it was a noise complaint.
It was a noise complaint.
Well, it used to be 6:00 AM, I believe, was your earliest start time.
Don't think it's 6:00?
I don't know what it is now.
It says 6:00, item number E, I think, under exemption.
And there are exemptions.
But didn't you say you wanted to start at 5:00, not 6:00?
Well, that's what we used to start at 5:00, because they say. It only has to do with temperature that day, and you know what that temperature is. So if it's going to be over 100 or 105, you know, we might be, start pouring at 6:00, but you're still doing things out there in the morning to get set up to do the point. And this is what the guy came down on, making noise, you know, driving the truck up there or the tractor got started or whatever.
Thank you, Mike.
I'm just looking at this, under one of them, it says noise is associated with agricultural operations, provided such operations take place only between the hours of 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM. Well, since we don't allow agricultural operations in the city, I don't think that applies, but I think commercial would.
Right above it, read E, right above it. Construction.
Oh, for equipment, yes. Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so we have that.
So you have 6:00 AM, you can start at 6:00. Does that, that's the way it's always been?
Well, as it stands right now, you're saying we're continuing this on for the next meeting, correct?
That's correct, but the only thing we were working on was the consistency of the noise standards. I mean, the council is giving direction to modify any other provision of the ordinance. I'm happy to take that direction, but that was what, not what I intended to bring back.
Steve, if I may, I was just stopping to develop the code standards, and they apply only to residential and mixed use zones, the exterior noise standards. So if you want consistency, I would recommend just using that language, which specifies the R1, R2, R3, or 4, then downtown and mixed use zones, but excludes commercial zones.
Okay. Okay, but what he's referring to is actually in residential, correct?
Well, I was addressing these first items, to whether or not these should be applicable to commercial ones. Again, the answer would be probably not, at least in buildings, by the way. With regard to the hours of operation, I believe none of that, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, none of that language was changed from what Steve votes.
That's correct. One of the things I wanted to clarify, are we talking about like the industrial park? Going back to Steve's question, is that what we're trying to distinguish from the residential noise?
Correct. So basically, the exterior noise standards, at least according to the new development code, apply only to residential zones. It does not apply specifically to the commercial and industrial zones.
Is that stated anywhere, or, I mean, in the beginning, does it say this applies only to residential or?
In the development code, yes, it does. It sells out all of the residential and mixed use zones.
Okay. Is that good enough, or do we need to change this?
I think it's fine with the development code, and I'll just make sure that when I bring this back again, we're consistent with that standard in the development code.
Well, item E, we were talking about with the construction, Laos has an exemption for continuing after 8:00 AM or after 8:00 PM if there's special circumstances.
We could do it.
Could we look at modifying it before 6:00 AM if there's a special circumstance, such as the temperature? I mean, if it's going to create a hardship on the developer to not be able to start it earlier, that's just.
True, we've been getting, there were some days here where we were hitting 90 degrees at 8:00 AM.
But then you say it's just one house at a time. I mean, we wouldn't want it that way for a huge development, of one house at a time.
Yeah, they're doing one house at a time, and the first house will be done, then after 6:00, it's be allowed anyway. If they were doing multiple houses, so.
It'd be hard to do such a house with the championship.
Very good.
Yeah, so I'll bring, I'll insert that and bring it back for your consideration.
Very good, good. Moving on to culture and recreation, Professional Landscape Solutions Service Contract Amendment. Mr. Solis.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we'll be discussing a Professional Landscape Solutions Service Contract Amendment. In July of 2013, the City Council, excuse me, City of Gulf entered into a two-year contract with Professional Landscape Solutions to perform landscape maintenance services for all city buildings and landscapes throughout the city. On June 30th of this year, that contract expired. The contract provided for three one-year extensions, but Professional was not willing to sign the extension due to the minimum wage increase in 2014 and the increase scheduled for January 1st of 2016. Professional provided a new proposal, which included the costs associated with minimum wage increase to the city in an amount of $158,801, which is an increase of $36,402, roughly 30%. The city contacted Perseida Landscaping, who does all the city parks, and obtained a proposal from them to see if that was a competitive quote. Perseida's proposal came in at $262,56,461 over Professional's. So staff is asking council to adopt a resolution approving the First Amendment for this agreement with Professional Landscape Solutions to be effective July 1st, 2015, and approving the budget transfer form in an amount of $36,391 for the fiscal year of 2015 and 16. Then I'll take any questions if you have any.
Council, any questions?
Armando, have we been satisfied with Professional? I thought we had some discussion in the past, but they weren't doing as good a job. And we do care about quality as well as money.
I have had my challenges since taking over the contract in March. I think we're hopefully straightening some of them out. I would like to give this a year, one more year, and then reevaluate it during the next budget process.
Okay.
Armando, this contract does reduce some services that we previously.
It does reduce.
I mean, particularly, I thought it was reduced to once a year instead of twice.
In the West Side, LNL.
The West Side.
Basically, A Street, Sparrow, that area there.
And how much savings was that?
$12,000.
Were they out there today?
They were on West Elm today. Yeah.
Okay. Any further questions?
I would just comment that it really does make a difference when they are maintaining A Street, the printing and everything, because the type of landscaping, the, what is it called, drought resistant or something, gets to look pretty, yes, shady after a while. So what if we didn't decrease it to just once a year?
It would add an additional $12,000 to the, to the cost of the contract.
Did we look at any other reductions anywhere else?
Currently, that was the only one that we, we needed to cut because of the shortfall in the LNL. 32 had the money, 37 was not a huge cost, and then 06 was a transfer over.
So when we bring on new properties, you come back and do we negotiate with them for sharing for the new properties?
Yes, we would have to.
Like the railroad?
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
Well approved.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Powers and a second by Councilmember Campion. Please call for a vote.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. You can have a vote.
Go ahead.
Okay, the reappointment, we've already taken care of. Moving on to the last item, the.
League of California Cities Conference designation of voting delegate. It's appoint a voting representative, and that's a two-alternate as the city's voting delegate. The, in fact, the meeting is, the leadership considers and takes action on resolutions that establish league policy. It's held on Friday, October 2nd, and Saturday.
The actual vote is held on Sunday.
Is everybody going for?
No.
Powers and Hewer and Cruz.
I nominate Mark again.
Saw that one coming. I'll be more than glad to do it.
What'd you say?
I'll be more than glad to do it.
Okay.
Do you need a second?
No.
I have a second.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Powers, second by Councilmember Campion. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. This means I'm the last one to leave.
Do we want an alternative, just in case? I nominate Laurie.
Watch out for that bus.
You just have to.
You'll be fine.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Okay.
We'll be there, we don't need no show, we don't have to have a hall.
We're good. All right, with that, any comments by staff? Start over here, Tony?
Nothing.
Nothing. Got to work on that mic, big guy. You start out loud, then kind of just taper off.
I was thinking, huh?
Steve?
Appreciate it, we're awesome. Just wanted to publicly, we have already out in the week lead to council, but for the public, we've been working on water conservation in June. The second month in a row, we exceeded the state's 32% mandate, hit 37%. That was following, I believe, a 42% decrease in pay. So we're doing good, and that's without citywide water underground, but that's a good thing. We keep up the good work. We're able, under these new protocols going forward, to actually bank any excess in June, for instance, or 5% over. If we had a bad month, next month, we could actually roll that credit forward, so.
But May, we had 19, so.
Body.
I'll keep up the good work. Also, we are expecting delivery of the Harvey Park playground equipment in the next week or so, and we're working, and I think Armando is working with the volunteers to schedule a play date to put in the playground equipment, so prior to the upcoming festival of the email.
Great.
And the audience.
Thank you, sir. Bill? Greg? Paula? Armando? You had the mic, so I knew you were going to do something.
I apologize. I just wanted, I know we're two weeks removed from the Independence Day celebration, but I wanted to send out some thank yous to our sponsors, Cal Waste, another year of sponsoring our event, SMUD, PG&E, F&amp;M, McDonald's, Softcom. We had great support from our community, we came in on budget. And special thanks to, and I know I will forget, we'll forget some people, but I apologize, Brenda Renfro for the parade, other outstanding parade, April Hanchi and Kelly Keegy for the exhibit hall, the Police Department for their help with traffic control, Public Works for road closures, Robin Nelson, Sharon Hafner for the 5K, and the CHAMP organization, and especially my staff, that they did, they all did a great job. So I just wanted to send thank you out to them.
It was an awesome event.
Yeah, bigger and better over you.
At some point, you're going to have to wonder whether you're going to be able to top yourself.
That's a good.
Just for information, 4th of July, we have a leap year next year, the 4th of July will be on Monday, so we will be having the Independence Day celebration on Saturday, July 2nd. So just wanted to give you a heads up then.
Fair enough. Chief?
Just a quick item, just to remind community members that National Night Out, this is the last council meeting before, no, actually, you're doing council meeting on the 3rd. So National Night will be on Tuesday, the 4th, so we'd like everybody to participate in that. And then later in August, there's already been initial bulletin out. The response has been great to community members coming together to do a Dry Creek cleanup, and so that'll be an event that will be publicized anymore. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Has the chief indicated? I just want to remind everybody that the next regular meeting is Monday, August 3rd, at 7:00.
Very good, sir. Comments by City Council, we'll start down here, Councilmember Hewer.
Thank you, Armando, I think they did a great job. I fourth.
Great, it is a wonderful job.
Councilmember Campion?
Couple of things, and I think we talked about this in the strategic plan update for the next newsletter, can we get something in there, like a how-to guide on reading your water meter? I know we talked about that, and I think there's something online now, but something to where people, they can actually, you know, take the thing out, well, this is what the meter looks like, and this is how you read it. I think that'd be helpful. I've had people ask about that. And then just a couple of, just a couple of status updates. Where are we on the Chabola Kitchen remodel? I haven't seen anything on that.
Littleton.
Excuse me, Littleton.
We're trying to get that back on track. We're still, there's some bids through an RFP process.
Okay.
We're locally behind, and with the several other new assignments, trying to get that off high center here and get that moving forward.
Okay. And there was, we're supposed to have a report back in March, I think, on the wastewater treatment plant financing plan? When, do we know when that's coming forward?
It is tentatively slated for August 3rd meeting, your next meeting.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, Councilmember Powers?
Sip and snack at the.
Sip and snack at the back.
Thank you. Is Saturday from Wednesday, you're the one selling.
I should have, I told him. I forgot.
Okay.
Six to 10.
Six to 10, okay. And then RJH Studio on 4th, Fourth Street's having an event from 8 to 11, I think, with a band, and so maybe people can piggyback both of those, because they're really trying to start working on getting more arts and cultural into the city, so really good band and hors d'oeuvres and all that fun stuff. So sounds like a day of partying on the 25th.
If I could add, if anybody wants tickets, we'd be okay if they called the police office and let me know if they need tickets, because I do have extra tickets. Saturday at 6:00 for six times. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor Payne?
I would just like to commend the Gulf Police Department. I've had comments from the people that live in the neighborhood around the community garden on 2nd and 3rd Street, that they feel safer seeing more of a presence of the Police Department, and I appreciate it too. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I just, as everyone else has said, you guys did an awesome job, both the Fourth of July festival and the fireworks. I think the only downside had nothing to do with the, with the operation itself, it had to do with the illegals going off.
Yeah, there's a lot of them.
And that's something you need to deal with. I know times past, we had both the CSD arson team and a group of fire, policemen working together to keep that curbed, and maybe we need to look back into that. This year was exceedingly bad, not only were we having illegal fireworks going off, and we're talking the mortars, but we also had people shooting firearms off into the air. And of course, I find out about it three days later, so didn't do any, do any good for us.
With that, if there's nothing else, the screening is adjourned.
We're adjourned to August three.
Till, I'm sorry.